Hello, welcome to the Northeast Ohio Media Group Candidate Debates. I'm Bob Sandrick. Today we're hosting a debate for Beechwood City Council. The election is November 3rd. The candidates will introduce themselves in a moment, but first, here are the rules. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and explain why they're running. Then we'll ask questions, giving each candidate 90 seconds to answer, and if they choose, a minute for follow-up. At the end, if we have time, well, we will, we will allow 10 minutes for the candidates to ask each other questions, with 60 seconds permitted for the answers. So, let's get started. The candidates vying for four council seats are Justin Burns, Martin Horowitz, Barbara Janovitz, Brian Linek, Michael Silver, and Mark Wachter. The seventh candidate, Michael Ellis, was unable to join us tonight. So, Justin, you can go first. Introduce yourself and tell us why you're running.
Good evening. First, I want to thank the Northeast Ohio Media Group for hosting this this evening. I'm Justin Burns. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Beechwood. I'm a graduate of Beechwood High School. I've been involved in the city of Beechwood for 23 years. The first 12 of those, that period of time, I was a volunteer firefighter for the city. I was subsequently then on the CERT team, and I was then on the Cable Television Commission, and then appointed chairperson of the Cable Television Commission. I was then appointed to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, where I served for approximately two years, and then was unanimously selected to fill a vacancy on city council out of 14 candidates in 2010, and served that through 2011. I ask you not to support me because I'm a lifelong resident of the city or graduate of Beechwood High School, but for what I've provided to the city. I have, I have three children in Beechwood schools. My wife Lisa and I have been married for 12 years, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Justin. We can go to Martin.
Thank you also to the Northeast Ohio Media Group for the opportunity. My name is Martin Horowitz. I'm proud to have been a Beechwood resident for 50 years. Graduated from BHS, and my two children also graduated from BHS. I am, I've been an elected official in Beechwood for 20 years. I'm proud to have served, had the honor to serve on the school board for 16 years, served four terms as president, and this is my, the end of my first term on council. I've been in numerous, numerous activities, and I'm not going to go through them, in support of our city and in support of our schools. What I'm, what I'm most proud of, and what I would ask you to consider through this debate and through the election, is to look at my record and what I've done in the last four years in terms of trying to be a new voice on council, and trying to raise issues that need to be raised, and try and become an innovator. Thank you.
Okay, Martin, thank you. And Barbara, you're next.
Sure, I want to thank you as well, as I'm sure we all will. Like Justin and Martin, and I believe the rest of us, I'm also a lifelong Beechwood resident. The only period of time when I haven't lived in Beechwood, when I was, when I was away at college at the Wharton School, University of Pennsylvania, for my undergraduate degree, and at New York University School of Law. After my law school career, I moved back to Cleveland, moved back to Beechwood, where I also had grown up, and where I sent my kids to high school as well. And in the 50 years that I've lived in Beechwood, the Beechwood diversity has, the community, rather, has become a more diverse community. And yet, I haven't seen that diversity reflected in Beechwood city leadership. And that was part of the reason that I've decided to run. I believe, from serving on a number of boards that I serve on both in and out of the Beechwood community, that in order to come up with the best solutions to problems, it's really important to have diversity on boards, and people that can look at issues from different viewpoints and different perspectives. I've got a lot of skills on those boards that are transferable to city council, such as analyzing budgets, making difficult financial decisions, and learning how to engage residents and others. I will bring those skills to the Beechwood City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Brian?
Thanks, and thanks to Northeast Ohio Media Group also for hosting us today. So, I guess I'm in good company, because I too am a lifelong Beechwood resident. I think we're selling Beechwood really well so far. You never want to leave. I'm currently married, we have three small children. Our oldest child just started kindergarten in Beechwood. During the day, I'm a senior attorney at the Sherwin-Williams Company, and like some of the other folks here, I've served the community in the past. I was appointed previously to Civil Service Commission in Beechwood. Following that, I was elected to Beechwood City Council, where I served for four years. And I'm really excited to get back to work and back on council. I think it's a unique time for the community, as we celebrate our 100th year. I don't think there's any 100-year residents on this panel today, but we are celebrating our 100 years of community, and really looking towards the next 100. I'm very excited to be a part of that.
Okay, Brian, thank you. Michael?
Hi, I'm Michael Silver, and thank you again to the Northeast Ohio Media Group and to the other candidates for council for being here this evening and hosting this event. I like to view myself as the resident's voice on city council. I first got involved in city politics about five, six years ago, when development was encroaching on my neighborhood. Got heavily involved in the planning and zoning aspects of what goes on in the city, and how that process works. I'm a little bit different than some of the other candidates. I'm not an attorney, I'm a business person, I'm an engineer, so I like to focus on business processes and controls. And that's part of what I would bring to the city, is looking at how we can have lean operations, and really put us on sound financial footing for our next 100 years. You know, we've had, we've had a lot going on this year with the 100-year anniversary, but a lot of residents really don't know. And that's where I'd like to be that conduit between city council and the residents, ensuring that people know what's going on in council, and what our intentions are, and what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, thank you. And finally, we have Mark.
Thank you. Mark Wachter, I'm a city councilman, city councilman at Beechwood City Council, and I appreciate the opportunity as well. I'm dedicated to what we do best, and that is provide exceptional services to our residents, whether they are city services for police, fire, the service department. That's what we do best, and I'm dedicated to continuing that process. Also, to supporting our excellent school system through smart planning and smart growth in the city. I'm a unique candidate, in the sense that I bring a substantial amount of experience, municipal experience, on the city council, and I look forward to continuing to do that. I have a breadth of knowledge, both with respect to operations of the municipality generally, and particularly with respect to the city of Beechwood. I participated in a number of the programs that we have in the city, including the pool, the park, the playground, bringing eat into the city, and I appreciate it, and appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
Okay, Mark, thanks a lot. And we're going to go on to our first question here, we're going to get, jump right into it. Earlier this year, the city awarded a contract for four police motorcycles to Southeast Harley-Davidson in Bedford Heights. The southeast bid of $73,000 was $14,500 lower than, than the only other bid. And in July, the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office, in a subpoena to City Hall, asked for all documents related to southeast and the other bidder, Lake Erie Harley-Davidson. The city administration has acknowledged that Mayor Merrell Gordon has purchased motorcycles from southeast, as well as other motorcycle dealers, and in 2009, southeast contributed prizes to a Gordon Raffle fundraiser. But first of all, does the city need motorcycles in its police fleet? And if so, should the city avoid buying from a dealer that has sold motorcycles to and supported the mayor, just to avoid the appearance of impropriety? And we'll start with Martin.
Well, whether the city needs it or not, I respect the opinion of the police chief and his department. If they, if they've determined there's a need, if they've determined that the old motorcycles need to be replaced, I respect his opinion. As to the ethics of buying from a company that you do business with, we all do business with various companies, as long as we're not owners in the company, I don't see the problem with it. I don't, I don't acknowledge the argument that because a subpoena was issued, that indicates there's something wrong. A subpoena is issued to request records. It's up to the prosecutor, it's up to the FBI to determine if something is, has been done improperly. The chief responded to the issue of the motorcycles. Our law director has responded to the issue of motorcycles. As I've reviewed it, it appears that the bid, the two bids conformed, and the southeast was, was the winning bid. If, if the prosecutor chooses to look at it differently, then that's, that's certainly their, their prerogative.
Okay, Martin, thanks. Barbara?
I would agree with Martin, in the sense that I think you have to defer, that we should defer to the city in terms of whether there's a need for the motorcycles. And part of being a good leader is employing good people and respecting their decisions, questioning when you think there's something that maybe they're not looking at closely, but they don't, would know more about the situation than I think the people on council, for the most part. I also agree that subpoenas that are being, that the subpoenas being issued, that we have to let the process go through the courts, and see if there was something that was improper. But I think the question really leads to the issue of whether there is enough transparency in government, and whether there's enough communication. And I think that some of the things that city officials do are done for the right reasons, but they don't necessarily communicate them well to the citizens, so that if they explained the way that they went about this process, why they made the decision that they made, I think the citizens would be more comfortable with the decisions, and not question everything that had been done.
Okay. Brian?
I also agree that, you know, as far as whether motorcycles were appropriate to purchase from the police department, I would defer to the police chief for that. You know, with regard to doing business with people who donate money, you know, I think it falls on, on us to choose who we accept contributions from. I've, over the course of running several campaigns, been approached by people doing business with the city, and I've turned that money down, and, and it's hard to do when you're raising money for a campaign. So, you know, on that end, I think that there's, it's incumbent on all of us to kind of make those choices when we're running campaigns. If we know we have an ongoing relationship with someone, it may not be worth whatever, if it's a dollar, if it's a thousand dollars, just trying to avoid that appearance of impropriety. I mean, at, at the root of it is, that people have to trust that we're doing the right thing in government, that we're being honest and transparent. And so, if there's ever a choice that, to make in a situation like that, I would always err on the side of caution, and trying to make, you know, people feel as comfortable as possible that we're making the right decisions.
Okay. Michael?
Well, like everyone else, I think it's not necessarily council's decision to make as to whether motorcycles are the right vehicle or not for the police force. And we do have to defer our judgment on that to somebody such as the police chief, or a safety director, if we have an independent operating safety director. I do think that this does point to other bigger systemic issues that occur within the city government. First of all, it's part of that transparency, and making sure that there's disclosure of when you've accepted, accepted campaign donations, and from whom, and if they're doing business with the city, or attempting to do business with the city. Further, as I understand it, this bid was only advertised in a limited circulation newspaper out in Lake County, not something that is really modern, and current with today's times, and how people look for business and do business today. So, I think, again, that's part of a process that we have in place, that we really would need to look at, and ensure that if we're only getting two bids, maybe we revisit that and go out and get more bids, and ensure that there's full disclosure amongst council and amongst all the leaders in Beechwood, as to when you've taken donations from potential business entities with the city.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you. What this talks about really is financial responsibility, and it's one of the things I mentioned at the beginning. With respect to the needs of the police chief, at the council meeting, the chief was questioned about the need for motorcycles, and he explained fully why those are an important part of, of city business. One of the things that I've insisted on, and it is part of our program, is a non collusion affidavit. That is, that when there is a bid from someone, they're required to provide an affidavit, that they have no interest in the contract, other than sale of the contract. And that's part of the program that I insisted on, and one that we use now with our vendors. In terms of the low bid, and whether additional bids should have been solicited, in fact, when only two bids came in, the police chief insisted on going out to every dealer in the area, and questioning whether they were interested in bidding. So, there was plenty of activity on this bid. With respect to the subpoena, the city is fully complying with the subpoena, doing everything that it should. Again, that's part of the transparency that's necessary. So, in terms of my position on it, again, this is financial responsibility, one of the positions that I'm dedicated to.
Okay, Justin?
Well, it sounds like we're all in agreement on, on this issue. Again, I would defer to the police chief, whether we need motorcycles or don't need motorcycles. I can go and show my history of the city. Back when Richmond Road was a two-lane roadway, and it was our main thoroughfare, it's still our main thoroughfare, but it was a two-lane roadway with deep culverts on either side, and if there was a car accident, it was very difficult to get from one end of the city to the other end of the city, which I believe is what led, back then, Chief Abrams to have motorcycles for the city. But, but at this point, well, I'll leave it to Chief Wyman, right, to determine whether we need them or not. As far as the transparency goes, all I know about is what I, what I've read and what I've seen, and it appears that the bids, there were bids, and that southeast was $14,000 lower, and thus, they got the contract.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone like to add anything about this subject before we move on?
Well, I'd like to mention what Mark said, and reiterate that as long as they have policies in place that say that there can't be conflicts of interest in people, respect those policies, and sign those policies, I think that goes part of the way to making people more comfortable with the decisions that are being raised. I think it raises the issue also, though, as Michael said, that we have more engaged citizens, I think, now than we have in the past. They're raising some of these questions that haven't been raised in the past, which is making council more receptive, because I think they're forced into being more receptive, which is a good thing, and I think engaging the residents is going to help with a lot of these transparency issues, as people become more engaged in the process.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Next question. Some residents have criticized administration officials and city council members for a wide variety of practices that have been reported in the media. Mayor Gordon was questioned for pocketing more than $1,700 to officiate weddings, and cashing out more than $10,000 in vacation time he said he didn't use. Residents complained about council members receiving free pool passes for themselves and their families, which council members denied. The state auditor said the city improperly destroyed pool pass records. Now, do you believe all this criticism is justified, or do you agree with other residents who say it's really making big deals out of very minor things? And we'll start with Barbara.
I don't think it's making a big deal out of minor things. I think that the mayor has done a very good job for a number of years running the city, but I've been disappointed in what I would call some bad judgment decisions that he's made. I don't think anything's too small to be questioned. I think when you're the mayor, you're held to a higher standard, so the fact that you do a lot of things right doesn't give you the ability to make some poor decisions, or say you can do anything wrong. You're a government official, and you need to be right and make correct decisions across the board. So, I think it speaks to whether, again, there's some oversight, that I think council has some responsibility for some of maybe his poor decisions by not having policies in place that could be susceptible to being used. I believe they fixed the unused vacation day policy.
That's correct.
But the policy that was there, and the fact that they didn't, they didn't fix it until it was possibly abused or not handled wisely, goes to the fact that maybe they didn't spend enough time creating policies that were not going to be subject to being abused.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, I, you know, the, the vacation time matter was one that actually I brought up when I was on council. And it really came up out of, we were surprised to learn about it in the middle of council meeting, because just didn't know that that was happening. And, you know, when we talk about transparency, we talk about transparency for the government to the residents. Most of the time, I think it's been a hot word thrown around here. But also transparency from the administration to the council. You know, we don't know, didn't have full access, we didn't have full understanding of, of how things were being treated, and how these policies were being abused at times. So, I think it's really critical that, you know, whoever's on council coming up really takes a look at the city charter, the code, and tries to see if it's in line with other communities, if it's up to date. I could tell you Beechwood's charter is long overdue to be revised. There's no other neighboring community around Beechwood that has one as old as us. And, you know, I think it's a little bit of a symptom of, of that. And it's not an easy process, it's not going to be a quick process, but it certainly is one that needs to be done. And so, everybody, both people on council, the residents, the administration, everybody's on the same page and understands what's, what's happening. But, but none of these things, whether they're, it's a pool pass, or a marriage or wedding fee, is too small for us to be worried about.
Okay, thanks. Michael?
Well, I guess I have to admit, I've often been one of those residents who's been a critic of the mayor, and certainly, if you go back and look through city council minutes, you'll see that I frequently am a speaker at council meetings. And I guess that points to, I'm not one to just be a critic, I'm ready to get out there and to get involved and be part of the solution. You know, we've got, again, the 100th anniversary of Beechwood that we're celebrating this year, really brings to light a lot of things. And it's those practices and principles of disclosure, and being held to a higher standard as an elected official, that you have to make sure you're doing the right thing. And that's what it comes down to doing. You know, again, the mayor's representative Beechwood will for many years. I remember when I first moved here, meeting him. But sometimes, you know, you get a little too comfortable, and you go a little bit astray, and I think perhaps that's what's happened. City council has attempted to address some of this, but what they've really done is pass ordinances that just make those practices more acceptable, rather than being not disclosed or something that's not out there. Pool passes are a great example. Nobody knew about the pool pass issue until city council started to pass an ordinance about it. So, I think it's when you look at those kinds of things, it's, it's no small issue. We're elected officials, we're held to a higher standard, and we need to be open and honest with our, with our citizens, and our residents, and our businesses.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you. Again, two issues that I've harped on, one is transparency, one fiscal responsibility. With respect to the wedding issue, and I think perhaps with vacations as well, there was a legislative intent. We had parts of our code that appeared, one place in a charter, one place in another code, one place in another code, or another section of the code, and until we recognized how all three worked together, the situation involved created the ability for any employee, an employee who wasn't able to take vacation otherwise to cash out vacation. It's been taken care of. When we recognized it, we exercised that responsibility, and the vacation cash out is no longer available to the mayor. I'm very proud of the pool, and I guess the only one here that actually worked on it and saw that project go together. I bragged about it a lot. As far as pool passes, the pool is a major asset, and the use of those passes for, for instance, some people who haven't been able to afford it on occasion, again, these are one-day passes, to be able to use it for that situation is important. But, or for instance, I gave a talk to a group of real estate agents, who had people that were interested in moving to Beechwood, and I said, "If there's an interested party, and they're thinking about moving to Beechwood and looking at the pool, talk to the mayor's office, and we can find out if we can get them in for a day, and encourage them to move to the city." There's a place for it. And, and that's where it was used. As far as our records, records weren't destroyed in the sense that someone was coming in to look at them, and we destroyed them all at once. The explanation's been given very clearly, that they were transient records that were, that were removed as they were no longer necessary.
And you yourself, you say, you still say that you did not receive any pool passes for yourself or your family?
No, I've paid for pool passes for my family, I've paid for pool passes for myself, I've bought yearly passes. The story that I read somewhere, that someone who knew my daughter, who knew someone else, who said he could get free passes, I, I'm not sure where that fourth level of hearsay came from, but it's simply not the case. Maybe I've talked about the pool too much. I've invited people to, to come, where I will be their guest representative, so if they don't live in the city, I'll be there in order to be able to get them a pass to come in to pay for it. But no, not otherwise.
Okay. Justin?
Well, speaking of the pool, so the pool is 12 years old. I've paid for a membership to the pool for myself and my wife, and now for my, my family for the past 12 years. I've never received a, a pool pass. As far as the mayor and the vacation time, council has dealt with that. I believe the council probably needs to work harder to see issues like this and other issues, to make sure that things like this don't happen. We may need to review, you know, our charter, as it's been mentioned, to, to prevent this. As far as the records go, so I'm a member of the records commission, and in my four years of being a member of the records commission, we've never discussed pool passes or the retention of them. So, as far as that goes, it, it hasn't come to that, that commission. I know that's been brought up about me previously. That's, that's my take on this issue.
Now, do you agree with the, with the law department? They said that those are transient records, because if they're not transient, then that would mean that the city would have to keep them pretty much forever.
So, as I mentioned, I am on the records commission. The city is under a subpoena for records, and I don't know that it'd be proper for me at this point to, to comment any further on that.
Catch my, I mean, I think the auditor of the state came out and said that they're not.
Well, hold on a second. We, you'll get, you'll get a chance to speak in a moment.
Sorry.
Right now, we're going to go to Martin, and then we'll come back to you.
Sure.
Martin, you can go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's a multi-part question, and, and all of the, all of what you're asking have different, different backgrounds and different, different explanations. But the one thing I will tell you, as regards, for instance, the, the vacations, Brian and I had an opportunity to, his last two years on council was my first two years. It was the first time that we discussed the benefits of the mayor and the mayor's salary. I think both of us were surprised when we walked into that discussion, that the mayor had basically the same benefits as an employee. And I can certainly understand healthcare, and I can certainly understand some of the other, other benefits. But the idea of an elected official getting vacation time just didn't seem to make any sense, because the reality is, the mayor, if he chose to, could work three days a week, and he can't be fired. So, to get vacation time didn't seem to make any sense. I think between the two of us, we were able to get a little bit of concession from the rest of the council members to, to have some vacation time that he couldn't cash in. The rest of it really didn't occur until later on, when the auditor started raising questions, and then council completely was willing to go along with, with eliminating vacation time.
Okay, Martin, you want to reiterate that you didn't accept free pool passes for you or your family?
Oh, I didn't know anything about pool passes until the first time that discussion came up. In the four years I've been on council, I, first of all, in the four years I've been on council, I probably have not been in the pool, except for official events.
Okay.
And, and no one offered me a pass, no one, I never asked for a pass, I never even realized they were available.
Okay, and we're going to give everyone another chance to, for follow-up responses. We'll start with Brian.
Well, I, just back to my point, when, you know, it's, to Justin's comment, you know, it's my understanding that the auditor of state has said that the pool pass records weren't transient, that, in fact, I think his quote was, the only thing transient about them was their existence. So, I don't know, I guess it'd be a little concerning if that's the way that the city viewed those types of records. I think it's a little bit, listen, I think we're doing a disservice to all the great things that are going on in the city of Beechwood, to all the hard workers, employees in the city of Beechwood, that we are spending so much time on these pool passes. I'm not trying to diminish the value or the concern related to them, but it's, it's good evidence of what's been happening in the community, and that's really what, why, why I'm running again. It's time to change the story. It's time to, to start focusing on things we could do in a positive regard. And so, while, you know, we could probably spend the next several days here going back and forth about decisions in the past, and were they right or wrong, and how were they viewed, you know, I, I hope that we'll get a chance to talk about some of the ideas we have for the future, and the good things going on.
Okay. Does anyone have anything more to say about that?
Barbara? With this pool passes, again, not to make it into a bigger issue, but again, I think it speaks to a bigger issue about being proactive, when we have ordinances, when we have rules, when we have policies, of just thinking them through a little bit more clearly, to see if there are ways where they may not be, be viewed in the best light or utilized in the best manner. With the auditor, I don't believe he said it was illegal. I think he said that there was maybe a better way to handle it, and the different communities handle what's transient, you know, decide what's transient, based on their own, their own decisions, and people can come up with differing opinions on that, but that maybe there wasn't enough thought given to making pool passes considered transient or not.
Michael?
Well, I wanted to just say I agree with Brian in terms of the need to review the city charter, because it's probably longer than we're doing, and I think Justin also pointed that out as well. And while certainly we can learn from the past, and we know all of these, these things that have gone on, and steps that council has taken to, to correct them, I do think it's also important that we really look forward to the future. And how are we going to continue to make Beechwood a better place to live, a more socially and responsible community for our residents, both with financial, and with the environment that we live in, and be a, a community that continues to develop and to grow. So, it's really about the future.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Martin?
I just want to address, you've mentioned about weddings, and I just want to address one issue with weddings, because one of the ways I work in government, and for the last, when I was on school board and now on council, is I look at best practices. I will pick up a phone, I will call other communities, I will look at their legislation, I'll look at their ordinances, I'll talk to their, the people on their council. I'll look at their ordinances, I'll talk to the people on their council. And I think when we got into this whole discussion about weddings, we had been doing it according to the way the auditor said we should do it, and then that changed a little bit. But the overall impact, or the way, the optics of it, Channel 3 did a report where they also investigated weddings throughout the city, and mayors were charging anywhere from free to $35 to $50. And our mayor was charging $125 or whatever. And I think when council sees something like that, it's incumbent on council to sit back and say, wait a minute, why are we, you know, I know we're Beechwood and we do things very well, but why are we doing, why are we charging that when every other city is in a much lower range, and the money is going back into the fireman's fund or whatever?
Okay, anybody else?
Yes. Thank you. One impression that I want to make sure is not left here. One of my concerns, of course, is responsibility. As chair of the legal committee, we have been going through the code with our law director, looking for any kinds of inconsistencies, looking for places where old code sections aren't working with new code sections. As far as charter review, charter review, as you probably know, is a very long, extensive process. It requires not just a simple vote of council, but actually requires an election to make charter changes. So those are in the works. This is not as if council has been sitting back all this time, watching things happen without making changes. The code is constantly under revision, and as chair of the legal committee, I've given specific instructions to the law director to start going through, and he's already given me a chart of what sections need to be done. So that's part of the responsibility that I'm dedicated to.
Okay, Justin, would you have anything more to add? Okay. Okay, moving along, we're going to get into another controversy here, I guess. Recently, the city hired a Washington DC communications firm for $15,000 to help with crisis management, but the city already has a communications firm, Lessick and Camper Communications, which the city pays about $7,000 a month. Does the city need a communications firm, or what should the city do, if anything, about its communications? And we'll start with Brian.
So, in the right context, I don't think there's anything wrong with having a communications firm, or if you do it in-house. You know, I think the majority of things in Beechwood, there's a good story to tell, and it's important that people hear that. And I'll go backwards, I don't, the K Global, I wasn't, you know, I'm not on council right now, and I don't know exactly what was discussed when they were hired, so I guess I'll wait and see whether we got the $15,000 value from that. I don't, I suspect we didn't. As far as the Nancy, the Lessick-Camper contract, you know, originally, that was meant as a gap filler, at least to my recollection, when we had no economic development department for a while. We had, it was during my prior time at council, we completely started from scratch, hiring new economic development, building from the ground up, but there was a lag there in between the previous and the new, and we wanted to make sure we were still out in periodicals and economic development, so Lessick-Camper was a good solution. I thought it was a short-term solution. I didn't realize that that was going to be the long-term plan, even after we established the economic development committee, or committee, the department. So, you know, I guess the proof is in the pudding. The city hasn't been getting good PR for the past couple of years, so if I had a review and say, was that money well spent, I probably would say no.
Okay, thanks. Michael?
Well, I too recall the time when the city used to do all of this stuff in-house, and I think it was very well done back then, and I don't know that, we do have a need for external communication firms working with the city. And certainly, as Brian points out, I think the proof is in the pudding in terms of the kind of exposure and the kinds of stories that are getting out there. But I think it does point to a bigger thing in terms of overall fiscal responsibility. And when you look at the city's expenses as a whole, and while, sure, $84,000, $85,000 a year really isn't that much in the big scheme of things, when you have a city where our general fund revenue, revenue from the taxes and from the jobs that people are working in Beechwood, we're down this year over where we were last year, and while we are cutting expenses, we're not really cutting them at the same rate. So I think it's prudent that we step back and we look at where the city spends its money, and where it's really necessary to spend the money. K Global, I think if they're responding to a crisis that was created by actions of the FBI and of others in the city, that shouldn't be something that the residents bear the expense of. Lessick-Camper, I think, is an outrageous expense as well, and I think if we have to sharpen the pencil and bring things in line, those are two primary areas right there.
Okay, thanks. Mark?
Thank you. One of the issues that's facing any city these days is being competitive, being able to attract businesses. The reputation of Beechwood is critical. We've got to maintain that reputation. Lessick-Camper has been very, very busy with social media, other means of promoting the reputation of Beechwood. When this particular issue came up, it was necessary for us to be proactive, get another firm involved, and protect the reputation of the city. It was the city that was involved, not any individual. In fact, I insisted that the law director revise parts of the contract, that the action by K Global was for the city and for the reputation of the city. And that was the reason for doing it. The financial wherewithal of the city depends on its reputation. Doesn't just come within the residents, but people who are thinking about moving to the city, businesses that are moving to the city, bonding companies that do our bond rating are looking at the reputation of the city. So, the additional amount spent with K Global under that situation, I think was well warranted. Their work isn't done incidentally. They've been retained not just for that particular incident, but also for coming up with a longer-range plan. I think it was important to do, and part of our fiscal responsibility.
Are you going to be spending more on K Global?
No. Despite what others may have said, they had not expended the full amount that was allocated. They had additional duties that were due. I think they likely will use the amount that was allocated, but for more than just what the initial work was.
Okay. Justin?
Well, here, I believe that perception is everything, and it might have been necessary to have a company such as K Global, but at the same time, with the amount of scrutiny that the city has been under for the last several months, I, had I been on council, I don't believe that I would have supported, at that time, retaining K Global.
Okay, thanks. Martin?
I think Mr. Walker and I have a little bit different view on this, the use of K Global. If you go back to the day the subpoena was issued, which I believe was a Tuesday, it was known in the community by Tuesday night that the subpoena had been issued. I started calling, I know some others, councilmen, we're calling the law department and our council president on Wednesday, saying, why can't we issue a response to subpoena? Response to subpoena really just needs to be, Beechwood has received the subpoena, we are reviewing the subpoena, we will act on the subpoena. That's really all we needed. And we wound up waiting till Wednesday night, 24 hours later, when our council president said, we're talking to somebody who will handle this, they will take care of it, we need a crisis management company. We discussed this Wednesday after a meeting, and I got the feeling that we were absolutely not going to make a response to the subpoena without hiring K Global. We all agreed that it would probably be worth at least exploring what they could do for us. Quite honestly, after I talked to the representative from K Global, three or four days later, I was out of town, we had a conference call, I was not impressed with what they had to offer. I didn't appreciate that they called the prosecutor and the FBI's allegations baseless. I thought that was not necessary in their response. And I think that, and they just issued their full response of what we should do in the future, which is basically have people get on blogs and send letters in support of the city. I have no intention of supporting anything further with K Global, as far as I'm concerned. We can get that done locally.
Okay, Barbara?
I believe this also goes to the question of, you know, fiscal responsibility, and Lessick firm being hired, I wasn't part of the discussions, I assume they, my understanding is that they had good reasons to, as part of the economic development plan, but whether it's going to be an ongoing contract or not, I think it's something the council is going to be studying, should be studying, whether they should continue that contract. With respect to K Global, I don't see that it was necessary unless, as Brian says, the proof is going to be in the pudding, but I think the city should have been able to handle it on their own with the assistance of the Lessick firm, even though they're not a crisis management firm. I don't think this should have been necessarily considered a crisis.
Okay. Well, does anyone like to, would like to add something?
You know, I think with anything with these experts, and one of the things that I found during my time on council is, it's great to have people who are experts in the field, but you have to be willing to listen to them. And oftentimes, I found that, you know, recommendations would be made and just ignored. If it wasn't something that people agreed with, then it was just written off. So, listen, if K Global, for $15,000, could have had a solution to end the negative scrutiny for the city, to turn the page and start something new, and everything was going to be great after, it would be worth $15,000. The day after K Global was hired, there were four stories in the Plain Dealer by Northeast Ohio Media Group about hiring of K Global. So, it just seems like, you know, either the advice they gave wasn't worth the money, or they gave good advice and it wasn't listened to, but either way, it doesn't seem like the value's been there.
Okay, Martin?
I just want to add one more thing. We have brought our economic development department in-house, we've brought our law department in-house. I have been an advocate for two years to get a full-time communications director. I think Nancy Lessick, her firm and herself, she's an excellent communicator, and they are a crisis management firm. They are capable of doing this. And I said at the council meeting when we approved the $15,000, that we also need to bring Ms. Lessick into this discussion. But we really need a full-time communications, a full-time communications director. I've advocated for two years, it takes four people on council to get something done. So until we reach that point, if we had a full-time communications person, I don't think we would have to go outside.
Anyone else? I'd like to add something. Mark?
Thank you. Just want to correct one issue that Mr. Silver mentioned. We talk about transparency, and our financial records are posted on the website every month, and they're available to everyone. Mr. Silver said that our revenue is down from last year, which simply isn't the case. The revenue is predicted to be almost exactly where it was last year, and keep in mind also that we have no estate tax to rely on. So effectively, our actual income tax is up. Again, we insist on this transparency, we put these records out there for people to look at, and again, that's part of what we do.
Anyone else? Or, Justin, sorry.
Yes. Yeah, I think that the one thing that the city does not do a good job at is communicating to our residents what we really do for them. They know, we need to tell them, though. People need to know, if you don't hear about it, it's out of sight, out of mind. We need to tell the residents of Beechwood and the surrounding communities what we do. We do not do a good job of that, and that's one place we need to improve on. Whether we need to hire somebody in-house and have a full-time position for that, I don't know that that's necessary either, but we need to do a better job of telling the residents and surrounding communities what we do.
Okay.
Can I add something to that on the same as long as they want? I think we need to maybe change the culture in council. My understanding is, you know, a lot of things we put out there, we say it's a seven to zero vote, we have to have a united front. I think people don't necessarily want to hear that everything was a united decision, they want to hear the story behind the story, that there was a lot of discussion, a lot of give and take, and people on council that have different opinions, different viewpoints, even though it takes a four to nothing vote, I think that they should know that oftentimes the decisions are made, four people in favor of something and three people against it, and that there was a give and take discussion before they made those decisions. I think that's part of the communication, and I don't think it lessens the value of what the final decision is. I think people want to know that there was thoughtful, careful deliberation on all of these issues, and they reviewed from different viewpoints, to come up with the best decision.
Michael?
Well, I do want to point out, Mark is absolutely right, the financial reports are online, and if you go and take a look at July of last year versus July of this year, you'll see the city is down about $600,000 in general fund revenue, and certainly a portion of that is from estate tax, although my understanding is that it's never made a significant portion of the overall general fund revenue for the city. I do want to point out, relative to Lessick-Camper, however, and I do find it sort of ironic that they're promoting Beechwood on social media, yet on the day of the actual 100th anniversary of Beechwood, there was one person who made a social media comment, and that was Steve Rosen. There was nothing else out there about the actual 100th anniversary of Beechwood yet. You know, that's our social media firm.
Okay, thanks. We're going to move on. Well, we've talked about a lot of heavy stuff here, controversial things, but I want to also say that Beechwood has a lot of good things going forward, I think you know that, businesses with high-paying jobs, good schools, variety of housing, and I bet you can name more. So what do you think the state of the city is right now? And we'll start with Mark.
Thank you. I think the state of the city is excellent. I think that we've got thriving businesses, we still have great portions of Chagrin Highlands to develop, which holds great promise, the ability to increase our income and our revenue stream through those, and also to increase the value of the properties, so that that then filters down to the excellent school system we have. So part of our careful planning is to make sure that those buildings are there. We are the envy of Northeast Ohio in terms of our city services. When my dad was hurt and had to get taken to the hospital, I heard about it from the police department before I heard about it from the doctors. Our response time is incredible. The delivery of these exceptional services, I think, puts us head and shoulders above every other community. We may have some issues to deal with, some of the ones that we've talked about today, but in terms of delivery of exceptional services and an outstanding school system, we're second to none.
Thanks, Mark. Justin?
I agree with everything that Mr. Walker says, but I think for the city to succeed in the future, we need to look a little bit to the past. And when I was a child in Beechwood, the Commerce Park-Murkantile area was really the heart of the city. Chagrin Boulevard was just starting to get going, Science Park didn't exist, and Beechwood Place didn't exist. The Commerce Park-Murkantile area is in desperate need of an upgrade. That property, unlike the Chagrin Highlands property, is in the City of Beechwood schools' tax base. When we, unfortunately, when companies move or build in Chagrin Highlands, the city's schools don't get very much money from that, most of that goes to the Warrensville Heights School District. Commerce Park and Murkantile is all in Beechwood. The city needs to assist the property owners there, maybe in conjunction with the schools, on some sort of tax abatement to redevelop the Commerce Park-Murkantile area, so that there's a reason to build new and tear down what's there. It's just not conducive to today's building environment.
Okay, thanks. Martin?
Well, I, I'm happy with probably 97% of everything we do, and I'm very proud of what we do. And it's a combination of good leadership, good government, location, schools, revenue, business, it's a lot of things mixed in together, but I think there's a lot more we can do, and I think that's the 5% or 3% or whatever that we need to focus on. I'm very troubled when I pick up Cleveland Magazine, and Cleveland Magazine puts us at 17 in our ranking. So for us to say we're the number one city, or we're the premier city, you know, certain rankings just don't give it to us, and I would be happy, you know, Solon, I think, is two, and I'd like to be one. There's a lot of things we could be doing that we just don't do. I've advocated for four years that we should be broadcasting our meetings. We do it 50%. We have, we have our meetings, we tape our meetings, so that's sort of the equivalent of the 1940s radio. In today's technology, technological world, there's no reason we can't be broadcasting. People can watch those meetings on an iPad. Mark talked about putting the checks on. Again, we're doing 50%. We post a PDF listing of the checks. When the state treasurer has a system that dozens of municipalities are getting on, that allows you to search out, an online active, interactive search for all the checks the city uses. There's little projects we've discounted. We don't do, a dog park, there was a suggestion about a dog park, we didn't do that. We certainly could do that for residents. We could help our seniors get their trash out when they can't do it. There's little things we could be doing, and big things we could be doing.
Okay, Martin, thanks. Barbara?
Well, I can speak to this, being the only person here that hasn't been, that isn't currently on city council, hasn't run for city council in the past. I've been spending most of my time the last couple of months going door to door, so I've knocked on more than 2,500 doors probably in the last couple of months, and I can tell you that people are very happy with Beechwood. They talk about the great services, they're second to none in services that we offer to seniors, and programming to seniors, and the low costs that we offer those programming. The recreational facilities are fabulous, people overall in Beechwood are really happy and think it's a great city. They're a little upset by all the news attention on the city, because they think it's great, and they're a little concerned that we're getting the bad publicity, but they're very happy living there, which isn't to say that Beechwood isn't perfect. No city is perfect, and there's always room for improvement. People tend to be concerned when I'm walking around the areas in which they live. As Marty mentioned, a lot of people are talking about a dog park. That to them seems to be a bigger issue than a lot of things going on with the mayor. Quite honestly, people that live in certain parts of the city are very concerned that there aren't enough streetlights. They'd like to have more streetlights, they're concerned about safety and making sure that Beechwood stays a safe community. People in the Beacon Concord area are concerned that there are crossing guards at Chagrin, and they said their kids can't walk to school and bicycle to school, again, sort of a safety issue. People are concerned about the lack of supervision at the basketball courts. So some of the issues that people in Beechwood are concerned about are not these big global issues. I mean, everyone's concerned about transparency and issues of that sort, but when it comes right down to it, they're concerned about the issues that affect them directly, and those issues are different in different parts of the community, and I think that Beechwood needs to do a better job of engaging the residents, reaching out to the residents, not waiting for them to come to council members, but actually going out into the community and asking them about their issues.
Thanks. Brian?
So, I feel fortunate. I am currently one of four generations in my family living in Beechwood, so you can imagine the different level of services that each of us take advantage of or appreciate. And, you know, I can tell you across the board, it's top-notch. It is great for my kids. We're learning to walk and starting school. It's great for myself and my mother, who taught in the schools, who recently retired, and my grandmother, who lives in one of the assisted-living facilities in Beechwood. We do a great job of that. We cater to different people's needs. Beechwood's much more diverse than people give it credit for, and the community has done a good job, I think, over time of adjusting to the changing population and really trying hard to provide those services. What really makes the city great are the people who work in the city. If you've had an opportunity, whether it's a service member coming to do some work on a drainpipe, people have had problems with backups. If you're building a house like I did in Beechwood, the building department, if you need a fire department to help with a car seat or an emergency, or the police, people who are from outside this community, who experienced those with you, who are there with you, they can't believe the level of service they provide. It's really those people who deserve leadership that they can look up to, and that can make them proud and give them something to strive for. They don't deserve the press that they've been getting, that the community's been getting, but they're really the cornerstone of what makes the community great and the services.
Okay, Brian, thanks. And Michael?
Well, I think we all agree. Beechwood's a great city. I moved here. I raised my family here. It's a wonderful community, and we certainly have been the top for many years. But as Martin's pointed out, magazines are now starting to rank us a little bit lower, and I think that points to that we're a city in transition. As Barbara pointed out, there's a lot of different residents and a lot of different constituencies out there. If I look at a grade school photo from when my kids started in Beechwood to today, it's very different, the mixture of the community. And those are different needs, and people want different things. We want more recreational opportunities. We just did the, we had the study done, or are doing the study with the Planning Commission, that's pointed out that people want a more walkable, more livable city. Chagrin, or Commerce Park, in dire need of a development plan, something that's been talked about for many years, started and stopped, never really put together a complete master plan for the city of Beechwood. They say there's one. It's the zoning map, but that's something else that's really needed. How do we progress towards that future? How do we make our city in transition? How do we get to be even better than we are today and let everybody know about it?
Okay, thanks. Does anyone have anything to add to that? Justin?
Yeah, a couple things. Under the Cleveland Magazine, we've seen this in the past. We've seen Beechwood, I believe, ranked number one at some point and fallen here, in this case, to 17. They might have been lower. They might have been higher in the past. Whatever the case is, Cleveland Magazine takes lots of different criteria to come up with their rankings. One of them happens to be crime. We have Beechwood Place. We have Pavilion. We have, unfortunately, we have shoplifting. That brings us down a lot, and it's unfortunate, but it also brings us a lot of money. So you take the good with the bad. That's one thing I want to talk about. The other thing is, I'm talking about broadcasting council meetings. When I was on council, we discussed this. I've done a little bit more research since I was on council, too, about broadcasting council meetings, because it's now 2015, and the idea of fighting broadcasting council meetings may be beyond its point. Nonetheless, if you look at a community like Solon, Solon has an outstanding system of how they broadcast meetings. And if the city wants to spend the money and do it like Solon, then so be it, but we have to decide if we want to spend that type of funding.
Okay. Who else wanted to go? Mark?
Thank you. First, the comments that Justin made originally about the Commerce Park Mercantile area is spot-on. If there's a weakness in our economic development, that's where it is, and that area needs to be revitalized. But there is a master plan, and I think Mr. Silver's aware of it. We've commissioned a master plan with the Planning Commission of the county. That master plan is going to be released soon, and we're all anxious to see what it has to say. So it's not just a zoning map. There's an actual plan that's being presented. With respect to the questions about the checkbook being online, we put the checkbook online when I saw that the treasurer was doing it at the state level. I asked the mayor to do it, and within a week, it was there. It's on there. It's free. I think the Northeast Ohio Media Group reported that the treasurer's version cost the state $1 million. Well, maybe we're in a PDF version right now, and we'll have some more functionality and more transparency there, but right now, our checkbook's online. In fact, Mr. Silver's looked at it himself. The diversity of the city is exciting, and I think that we're all looking forward to being able to accommodate it.
Okay. Anyone else? Martin?
I go back to my original point, that we're all very proud of this city, and our services are excellent. But I used to run into the same situation in schools, where we would say we're the best place to learn. And the way you constantly improve yourself, you're never the best at anything, is you look all around you. I went around the country to conferences to look at the best programs in schools around the country, and I think what we don't do is we don't, as councilmen, look at what the best programs are around the state, around the country. I went down to the Ohio Municipal League Conference two years ago, which is sort of our trade union, if you want to call it that, and the finance director said, "I don't know how to write you up because you're the first councilman to go down there." And I think we, as council, have to really educate ourselves about what else is going on outside of our city. We do a wonderful job, but we can always improve. We can always bring more residents into the system. We can always find a new program to try. We can always try and economize in certain areas. There's a lot we can do if we go out and learn from other cities.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, and just going back to this checkbook, what we have on the city website right now is not the checkbook online. And, you know, it just so happens the treasurer of the state lives in Beechwood, a few doors down from Mr. Walker over here. So I could think of no better city to adopt what he's trying to do than Beechwood. I mean, I see constantly in news stories that, all over the state, he's standing in small communities who have adopted the treasurer's program, and it doesn't cost the cities $1 million. It was the cost of the state to set it up so cities could find it accessible. It's a searchable database. It's functional. It's easy for people to use. And, you know, listen, if, there's no reason, when something's like that's available, the city doesn't take advantage of it. To say it's a cost issue, I think is being a little disingenuous with the people in the community. We've spent money on things that, you know, provide far less to the residents and to the public than that.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to add, what Murray said is, I think it's terribly important to be looking at what other communities are doing. On the boards I serve on, it's very important that we compare what other boards are doing. We take the best of what other suburbs are doing, and we can improve upon them. It doesn't mean we have to copy them, but if we stay very insular, just say, "We can do it this way in Beechwood." This is how we've done it, without looking at the other communities and see how they're doing things in certain ways better. I think we're, you know, really missing an opportunity. And with certain areas, they're going to be more regionalized, and that's kind of a push. As boards have sort of collaborated, we're going to be collaborating with other communities more. We need to know what's going on in the other communities and gain the wisdom from some of the things where they've gone through their thought process. We should be going through the same thought processes, and again, taking the best from what other places are doing and try to incorporate it in Beechwood.
Thanks. Michael, would you like to add anything?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Going to go out of order. One more?
Last question.
Last question. Okay. Beechwood is considering expanding its emergency dispatch center and sharing it with neighboring communities, including Cleveland Heights, Shaker Heights, and South Euclid. What do you think of this plan and regionalization efforts in general? And we'll start with Martin.
Well, I support regionalization. It's interesting you ask the question now, because we just had a meeting on this, and I just saw the agenda, and Tuesday, this will be coming up for a vote. I think that we were all very excited about the idea of regionalization and the idea that we would be hosting the center. I don't know what the status is of those discussions at this point. We just had a meeting amongst our council that, to discuss the need for replacing our own equipment, and there's definitely a need to replace our equipment. I don't question that. I don't question what the chief reported to us. I think there's two issues. I think we have to know, before we do something on our own, I think we have to know what the status is of the meetings with the other cities, and I think we also have to know if that arrangement is not going to take place with the other four cities, which I'm getting the feeling it is not, because that's the way it was reported back to us at our last meeting, then I think we have to look and see the cost benefit and the service value of possibly merging with another center that's already up and running.
Barbara?
I agree with that. I'm not privy to some of those conversations about what's going on in the past, but I know I've talked to Murray about why do we need, what's the urgency? You know, they were considering giving $1.4 million to the center, and I asked, "What was the emergency? Why not wait and see what happens in terms of the collaboration with other cities, or see what the county decides to do?" He said, "Our services, you know, we were in desperate need of improving that," which raised the issue as to why are we waiting till the last minute? Should we be doing something under, so that kind of deadline when we don't have to? Maybe it wasn't thinking forward, thinking enough when we had the dispatch center. They were making some of these decisions under the gun instead of in a well-thought-out orderly manner.
Okay. Brian?
You know, I agree with Barbara. It's unfortunate these things pop up and they become really urgent things that you have to rush to a decision on. This is certainly something that requires some thoughtful thought, planning, understanding the different options. I am not aware of the specifics of the equipment or what's necessitated. It may be something that came up unexpected, so I'll leave that out there. That's a possibility. But I've heard some different plans. I heard that it was going to be built in a fire station at one point, and now I hear it's part of the old service building or city hall or where the existing dispatches. You know, it just, it strikes me that it's a moving target, and, you know, we need a little bit more detail, a little bit more information about what to expect. And as long as, you know, it's not something that really is critical that happens today, if it means wait a few months and get some more information, it's probably worth it.
Okay. Michael?
One more comment, sorry. You know, while there are certain things that I do support with regionalism, and I think are a good thing, you know, a dispatch center for the police and fire, I kind of like the feeling of having that in Beechwood. I like the idea of when I call those people, they know the streets I'm talking about if I need them. I, you know, I don't know the extent of how the other options work out. You know, we've absorbed another city Pepper Pike, and it seemed to work out well, but, you know, there's a certain point when you're losing a level of service, when you become this huge provider. So, you know, at the heart of it, services to the residents can't suffer.
Okay, Michael?
Well, I tend to be a strong supporter of regionalism, and sharing services is really what's at the heart of it, where you can get some economies of scale. I like the wait-and-see approach of Martin and his spouses. I think it's prudent to make sure that we're in a position to move forward with that in an appropriate way, to know that those other cities are going to come in and join us. But I think the dispatch center is just one example of an area where we could work more cooperatively and on a more regionalized basis with our neighboring cities. There's other opportunities in terms of recreation, in terms of streets, and I know we're doing things with the traffic lights. There's a whole host of other things that we could do with other communities, and it's not just us having a dispatch center.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you. Again, this is one of the exceptional services that we have provided, which is an up-to-date service, up-to-date dispatch center, which, as you noted, is already, we're taking over the work for Pepper Pike and working with them as well. This is not a rushed project. This is something that has been studied for a long, long time. Our current equipment needs to be replaced to bring it up to date, to maintain the exceptional services that everybody has come to expect. We are looking, as everyone has suggested, to other municipalities and to best practices, and to a design that's going to be able to accommodate not just Beechwood, but should we choose to do it, to regionalize it and bring in other communities. There was a plan underway, and other communities had to cooperate in order to be able to do it. County funding was going to be involved, and that may yet happen. But in the meantime, we need to serve the city of Beechwood with the best services possible.
Okay. Justin?
Well, I'm a proponent of regionalism, if it's done properly and in the right circumstances. I don't know, as I mentioned earlier, I was a volunteer firefighter for 12 years. Occasionally, I spent some time in the dispatch center. I really like the idea that our dispatchers and our police officers, our firefighters, really knew one another, and our dispatchers know the layout of our streets and what patrol car to dispatch to a street immediately. Things are different now. That was a long time ago when I was a volunteer firefighter, and there's more sophistication. Nonetheless, I don't know that enough about this, or what's been discussed with council, but it's worked out well with Pepper Pike. That's another small suburb, and we can work well together. As far as regionalism goes and other ways to expand it, I believe that there is, there are areas, and I believe that merging fire departments may be one area. This is very expensive equipment, we all know. A fire engine is $600, $700,000. They're used seldomly. I believe that if they're based in the right areas, that that may be a place to save funds with our neighboring communities. I don't know that dispatch right now is the place to go, but it might be.
Good, thanks. Does anyone have anything to add about that? Martin?
Well, just one thing. If we go and spend the money, we're spending $1 million for, if we can somehow work out our, whatever issues need to be worked out so we can work with four other cities, there's a very good possibility the funding is there through the county, and I would really like to see us look at that before we make the commitment. I'm not a believer in the theory, if you build it, they will come, okay? Because I think what's going to happen, we already have the Chagrin Valley Center, and there's a couple other centers online or almost online, and eventually, you're going to find most cities are going to be in a group with the dispatch center, and somehow, we're going to be sitting with our own dispatch center, that we're going to have to continuously pay upgrades and everything else. And that particular area is a perfect example of good use of regionalization, and I think we really need to explore this a little further.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Well, now we've come to the part of the debate where we're going to ask, the candidates ask questions of each other, and I don't know if you're ready for that, but we're going to give it a try. And we're going to start with Justin.
I don't know exactly how I'm supposed to go about this. I don't know that I have any questions to ask.
Okay. Okay, we can move on. We can always come back.
Okay.
And we'll go to Martin.
I don't have any questions. I know everybody here, and I think I know how they think and what they support and how they feel.
Okay.
So I'm questionless.
Barbara, do you have any questions for the candidates tonight?
Yes, my question would be, because having, again, not having been on council, is how everybody thinks we can communicate and engage residents better, because I just think that's critical from talking to residents, that they don't feel that they're engaged enough in the community. And I think that good leaders need to bring people on board, need to think about what the next level of leadership is going to be, and if anyone has any thoughts as to why that hasn't been done. I know when we talked about term limits, people were concerned that if we hit term limits, there wouldn't be qualified people to step up and fill vacancies in offices because there aren't enough people in the community engaged and willing to do so. So I just wondered if people had any thoughts as to how to engage the residents better.
Michael was first. Michael, you can go ahead.
I've talked for several years about the need to have, put a sign in front of city hall. I know it was in the 100-year plan that came out earlier this year as to one of the initiatives that the city should fund, but I think if you look at other communities, they do it. They have signs out in front of their city halls. Pepper Pike goes out and puts signs up in the community when there's important meetings for residents to be involved in. It's through that. It's through the website. You know, there's a town hall meeting tonight that probably half the residents didn't even know about, and I think it's important to communicate those things, and a sign in front of the city hall is a great way to do it.
Okay. Martin?
Well, I feel that we do some good communication in terms of the website. We have Code Red, and we have all these other sophisticated procedures, but I go back to 25 years ago, and we had the 75th anniversary of Beechwood. We had a giant party, and we had a parade, and we had a whole community event. And I feel like the 100th anniversary, with all due respect to Ms. Carmen, who put together a wonderful series of events throughout the year, we haven't had, we had, I think, one meeting with some citizens involved, but we don't have a number of citizen committees to bring new people into city hall, to review things, to talk about things, to talk about a charter commission, to talk about, we used to have a rec board with citizen members. I don't even think we have the rec board anymore. We had a cable commission, and we had citizen members on that. We need to get people into city hall and into the operations of city hall to see what's going on, and I think we need to do things like block parties. I have a sister and brother-in-law live in Shaker. They have block parties on their street four or five times a year, and everybody knows everybody. It's a wonderful feeling. So I think things like that we need to be working on.
Mark, do you know what happened to all those boards and commissions and committees?
I can tell you about some. The cable commission no longer became necessary because there was an issue at the time where you could only have one cable company, one cable delivery, and so we had to have a cable commission, so that's no longer around. Records commission is still in place. I can't tell you what became of the recreation board. I think that was gone before my time. I can respond to the question, though. In fact, it's interesting. When we had the new city hall designed many years ago, and I'm sure, Bob, you're aware of it, you've seen it, the whole outside of the building is glass. You can drive by, and you can see from the street all the way into the city council, and that was done by the architects intentionally to emphasize the concept of transparency. I don't disagree that we could do better at notifying residents about critical issues. The town meeting this evening, those people who live in that area all received mailings or had some information dropped off. It is put up on the website, but I think we probably could have avoided the town meeting altogether if we'd given certain heads up to those residents maybe three weeks ago before construction started. This is a Beechwood Place issue. So I think we can do a better job of it, and it's easy to sit in city hall, to sit in council meetings, think that you know what's going on, that everybody is watching you, but we do have to get out and do a better job of making those things known. So, yeah, the transparency's there. People can see it if they want to. I think we have to get out and make it a better message, though.
Justin or Brian, do you have any?
I think we need to really take advantage, I think we all agree. Beechwood has a wealth of brilliant, really talented people living in the city, and they just need to be brought in to make some of these decisions. So many of the people in the city know more than any of us will know on issues related to technology. We have technology gurus who live in the city, who we need to reach out to, to help us make these decisions. Again, I don't think they're going to necessarily come to us, and I'm going door-to-door. I think we have to reach out to them, and maybe council as a whole needs to be better at doing that. I think that's the way we're going to have Beechwood, have people be more engaged, be more transparent, and end up with a better result.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah, I think one big kind of culture change needs to be that it's okay to have people engaged who disagree with you. You know, people who disagree with things that have happened or what's going on are put aside, and it's much more comfortable surrounding yourself by people who think you're doing a great job and are you're doing a great job and are happy with everything you do. So there needs to be a willingness to have that other side represented at the table and you're cutting out too much of the population when you take that approach. So there's no doubt. I've knocked on doors in this city a number of times over the past years and people want to get engaged and shame on us for not taking advantage of them. You know, paying a firm in DC to do PR, I bet you there's someone in Beachwood that could have... Would have done that for free, would have been happy to do it and probably would have done a better job. So it's... That's not on the residents. That's on the government and us to create that environment that they feel comfortable.
Anybody else? So Justin?
Well, here, I don't know exactly how the city engages its residents, but I can tell you that I am the co-president of the Beachwood Schools PTO and we've merged four different PTO groups in the past four months into one. And last week, we had our first PTO meeting where we had basically a standing room only in the boardroom. Somehow or another, we got people to turn out. So I have a... Now I have a history of being able to bring people together and get people to turn out to things. The residents do want to get engaged. How we do that, that's where council needs to come to a meeting of the minds and work together to somehow get more people engaged so that we have future leaders who understand. So somebody doesn't say they don't know what's going on because they haven't been involved.
Did Michael, did you get a turn yet?
I did.
Okay.
Can I just add one thing to what Barbara said?
Sure.
Because this is something that I think we all sort of agree on. We have in our community a gentleman who is in charge of an organization called One Community. He's been around for, I don't know, 25 years. He is the lead... One Community is the leading nonprofit organization that organizes dozens and dozens of communities in Northeast Ohio to put in ultra-high-speed fiber broadband cable, which we are working on a small project to do that now down Richmond Road. Other cities are a little bit ahead of us on this. We have him in our community. I understand, we talked to him once, decided not to use... Not to engage with him in working on the project. We have people in our community that are experts from Neila Park, from GE, who are working on a small project to try and do some solar lighting. And we don't engage them. We don't use the resources that are right in our own community.
Okay. We're going to move on. Brian, would you... Do you have any questions you'd like to ask other council members? It could be everyone or just one or two in particular?
You know, one of the things that, when I was on council last time, was important to me was this broadcasting of the meetings, talk about engaging the community. I went so far as I couldn't get the support of others on council at the time to pay for it out of my own pocket and had done it for years while I was there and even after I left, just to make it available if someone wanted to see it or couldn't attend or was concerned about what was going on in the community. I guess I'd like to go around the table. I know we talk about it and I hear the votes are there, you know, and just see everybody's position on why this hasn't happened yet and, you know, if elected, would they support it or not?
Or Michael?
Well, I think you know I'm a strong supporter of videotaping city council meetings. And the website already has the capabilities. We disabled that functionality. We hid it from the community. It's there. The infrastructure to put it out there is there. We just need the infrastructure to record it. And if we're going to do it live, then certainly that takes additional equipment. And Lev Gonik is an excellent resource to our community. We should definitely tap into him a lot more.
Barbara?
You know, I agree with live streaming as well. I like what Marty said, is he doesn't have a face for video. I mean, none of it... We're all going to be embarrassed.
None of us do.
If I'm elected, I'll be the, you know, only woman in the first... You know, probably will have a larger learning curve than others and may say some things that, you know, sound stupid, but I think it needs to be out there. That's part of being transparent and sometimes making a fool of yourself in front of people. I think having audio recordings is a step, but as an estate planning attorney, I can tell you, when you don't see people, when you don't see the interaction, when you don't see, you know, how people respectfully respond to questions, you're missing a big part of the conversation. So I think not seeing things is not good enough. We need to go all the way in live streaming.
Okay. Justin?
I brought this up earlier and mentioned Solon because Mr. Horowitz, I think, had brought up Solon. I think that if we do this, we ought to... And we talked about looking at what other communities do well. I think we ought to go and look at Solon. They do this really well. I do not know the cost of their system. I think we need to investigate that and again, determine if this is something that the city of Beachwood wants to do. And if council elects that this is what we want to do, we ought to do it, but do it the right way, not just do it and put a camera in the back. I appreciate what Mr. Lenick had done previously and it was out of his pocket. It just isn't the most sophisticated way of doing it and we're Beachwood and we need to do it the right way.
Mark?
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's inevitable. I'm not opposed to it. I think it's part of real transparency. I do have one issue though, and when something's transparent, you can see both ways. And what I'm concerned about and what I anticipate happening is some of what we're seeing already and that is, we're willing to sit in front of a group of people and talk about a particular issue and I'm happy when someone sits in the audience and comes up to me afterwards and wants to discuss an issue, despite what Mr. Lenick says. I'm happy to disagree with them and have them disagree with me and work out the issues. What we're seeing though is that we're presenting all of the information and instead, we get back anonymous comments that you can't respond to and that you can't deal with. That's difficult. That makes things difficult for us to do. I'm happy to make the information available. I just would like citizens to take the other side of it, step up and be there and use their right to petition by being in front of the council.
Martin?
Well, I'll tell you, I have a background in technology and which I acquired about 10, 12 years ago. And 20 years ago, when I was on school board as president, I came in front of the city council advocating that we set up a cable system between the schools, the city, and municipality. We don't even need the cable system anymore. The schools had a TV... We were building a TV studio. We actually looked at Solon 20 years ago to see the kind of broadcasting that they were doing in their council chambers. Of course, now it's all more sophisticated. But all this has gone on for 20-some years. I talked to somebody, I think it was in, I want to say Rocky River West, like they had been doing it for close to 25 years or 22 years. And they had a great comment. They said, "As soon as we started doing it, the people that came to meetings and used to rant and rave, they stopped coming because they didn't want to see themselves on TV." It's really... There's no question, it needs to be done. Cleveland Heights does it, Solon does it, dozens of other committees do it. It's not complicated. It's not expensive.
Okay. Michael, do you have any question you'd like to ask a council person or a candidate or everybody?
No, I think we're pretty good for this evening.
Okay.
Can I go back?
Sure.
Can I go back and now ask? I'll think of a question. I reserve my rights, that's it.
Okay. Justin, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I want to get everybody's view. I've heard from some people in the past who have seen this. When we talk about deed restrictions, there was an issue at Beachwood Place. This may happen again someplace. I want to hear everybody's view about deed restrictions in general. Does everybody feel that once a deed restriction has been put in place by the city, whenever it was put in place, that this should never be changed?
Okay.
Well, I tend to believe that and certainly that's impacted my area where I live and